Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing, date November 24th, 2021. First, I'm going to do the land acknowledgement. I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are on the traditional lands of the Acadian First Nations, part of Mi'kmaq, the ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. All right, moving on to item number three, statement and purpose. The purpose of this public hearing is to hear appeals on site plan approval for PID number 901-83062, 79 Greenville Road, Pleasant Lake, which will be to establish a daycare and boarding facility for dogs as a home occupation. Please be reminded that no decision will be made during this public hearing. So, the call for presentations, 4.1, Development Officer Briefing. Roger, come on down and hit the red button on the microphone system. I'll turn you on, you'll have the floor.
Good evening. Everyone hear me? Good? Okay. So, I did up a briefing note and provided us, probably everyone with some information prior to this meeting. There's quite a bit of reading materials with it. The file is a site plan approval appeal for PID number 901-83062, and that's at 79 Greenville Road, Pleasant Lake. It's submitted by Victoria Brooks, the CAO, and myself, Roger Devine, a development officer. Some of the background, I went through some of the planning legislation policies and bylaws. The municipality's municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw and the municipal government act set out the policy and regulations for site plan approvals. Section 231 and 232 of the municipal government act provides legislative authorities that are allowed within the MPS and LUB. Section 231.4 provides the specific elements that a site plan approval may speak to. I've added some appendixes, but in appendix A, that those documents are there. In addition, section 232.3 sets out a framework for council to hear an appeal. That's where we're at tonight. Policy 8.8 of the municipal planning strategy describes home occupations and sets out more stringent requirements in certain zones. Moreover, 8.1.4 states, "It shall be the policy of council to establish specific site plan approval requirements in the land use bylaw that will apply to certain types of home occupations with the potential to cause conflict with adjacent residential uses." Furthermore, policy 15181 of the municipal planning strategy states, "It shall be the policy of council to use the municipal government act's site plan approval process to enable home occupations for automotive repair shops, small gas engine repair, portable saw mill operations, kennels," which is why we're here tonight, "recycling depots, firewood operations, and construction and recycle building material operations, also small-scale wind turbine generators development to be dealt with by site plan approval." In section 232.1A and B of the municipal government act, it requires that site plan approval be granted unless certain conditions are not met. And that's also noted in appendix A of your information that was provided to you. In accordance to the municipal government act, section 232.2 and 236.1, within seven days after granting a variance, in this case, a site plan approval, the development officer shall give notice in writing to every assessed owner whose property is within the greater of 30 meters and the distance set out in the land use bylaw or policy of the applicant's property. Section 236.3 states that where variance is granted, a property owner served by a notice may appeal the decision to council within 14 days after receiving the notice. So, I'll describe the proposed development to you. So, the owner of the property known as PID 901-83062, which is currently zoned rural development, wishes to establish a doggy daycare and boarding facility business as a home occupation there. Plans are to utilize an existing accessory building and construct another small building to be used as an office. As per the MGA, MPS, and LUB, the owner applied for and was granted site plan approval. The development officer, myself, have notified the property owners in the vicinity. So, the status is, on November 3rd, 2021, two appeals of the site plan were filed with the CAO. In fact, that's now three. The property owner, the owner of the property in question is seeking approval from the Nova Scotia Department of Transportation Infrastructure Renewal for us for a driveway, and is planning to construct an additional driveway there. To date, no development permit or billing permit had been approved for the small office building. And that's, I failed to notice, don't note that in the, there's an appendix D and appendix E you can refer to for photos. So, the options available to council. One option is to uphold the site plan approval as is. Option number two would be to overturn the site plan approval. And option number three would be amend the site plan approval by adding requirements where within the municipal purview that speak to the appellant's concerns. So, I've taken the time to condense some of the things that were mentioned in the various appeals. So, I entitled those sections, citizens' concerns and mitigations by proponent. The first one I'll deal with is the Pache appeal. The Paches list the following reasons for appealing. Item number one was noise. The applicants have noted in their proposal that the building will be renovated and fully insulated to include soundproofing to minimize any noise that may arise from dogs outside and inside. Privacy fencing is proposed alongside the existing dwelling to provide privacy and serve, and I quote them, "to minimize noise." You can see the appendix B for those details. These details are noted in appendix B, under the doggy barn section and fencing and playpen section of the proposal. The proposal is for, and I quote, "No dogs to be allowed outside before or after opening hours," which are Monday to Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturdays, 8:30 to 4:00 p.m., and they'll be closed on Sundays. These details are noted in the operations section of the proposal, along with other operational details. Item number two, the environment. These issues have been addressed in the pollution, water courses, and limited soil erosion section of the proposal. Item number three, reduction in property values. No recommendation is being made regarding this issue by myself. The second appeal we receive is titled Leggett. Pardon me. Yes, it's the Leggett appeal. The Leggits have listed the following reasons as reason for opposing the proposal. Item number one, public health and welfare. Adverse effects on public health and welfare of surrounding properties and the three health-related questions. I refer you to the applicant's proposal, and that would be in appendix B for those details. Item number two, increased traffic. Concerns were raised around traffic entering and exiting the proposed business. This is a matter administered by the Nova Scotia Department of Transportation Infrastructure Renewal. Council can direct the appellant to the appropriate office to answer their concerns. Item number three, sound. Again, I refer you to the applicant's proposal. Item number four, wastewater and pollution. In the letter, several assumptions were made around environmental contaminations. The Nova Scotia Department of Environment is the authority which has jurisdiction over such matters. Please refer to the attached site plan for setback details, as well as the written proposal, and that's in appendix B. The third appeal was by the Jarvis's. The Jarvis's listed the following reasons for opposing the proposal. Item number one, barking dogs. The Jarvis's noted, and I quote, "will disrupt the peace and tranquility of their neighborhood. It will also interrupt the beautiful natural environment. People will lose sleep during the night." Item number two, increased vehicle traffic. And I quote, "More people will be coming to visit and driving along that area. Will be a cause of concern, not just for peace and quiet, but also for the privacy of the neighborhood. More cars will be visiting, will ramp up the carbon emissions in the area." Item number three, environment and fish habitat. The Jarvis's expressed concerns regarding the nearby lake and river, and I quote, "There are various species of fish which swim up and down, and it is an important passage way to their spawning ground. Dog excrement, loose fur, and other potential pollutants may not be properly disposed of and may affect the fish and water ecosystem." So, I've included some appendixes for you there, and maps and photos of the proposal and the area, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
So, open up the floor to any questions in the council. Counselor Nick Hilton, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the description. I guess I have a few questions. The proposed site plan, does that have to be followed to a T? And if it was outside of those boundaries, would we be notified of that? Or, once approved, can they go outside of those boundaries?
So, the proposed site plan is, it was digitally remastered by us, but it's based on a site plan that was provided by the applicants?
Yeah.
So, I based my approval on that particular site plan, yes. So, if the details of it were to be strayed from in any major way, I would revisit that.
Okay.
Yeah.
In approval of the driveway, do we know if that's been approved? Are we expecting issues with that? I just see where it's across from the highway that...
Yes. I don't know if that's been completed yet. The, I think the application is in, but there's no decision has been made by transportation on that.
And of course, I always have issues with noise when it comes to residential living. Do we have any way to police that of sorts after this is, if this was to be approved?
In our dog bylaw, we have a procedure for dealing with barking dogs. It's quite, it requires keeping a log of the dog barking and all this, and then creating, trying to determine whether there's a case for, you know, an issue with barking dogs. But we do have a procedure for that.
Thank you.
We would have to go divert to that or revert to that.
And the setbacks for, from the revert, those were provided by Department of the Environment?
No setbacks would fall back to our repairium buffer of 40 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mike's got the magic touch there. Thanks, Mike. Mike, I have two questions, and you answered the one about the dog bylaw and noise. Thank you very much, and thank you for the thorough report, all 88 pages. Very good. It was good reading.
You're welcome.
Very educational. The question about future development, so this plan that's been proposed, and you've approved it, does that include the office area? Or, when that building comes on, will there need to be a separate development agreement for that? Can you speak to that?
Yes. So, the site plan approval has been approved from, by me. In order for them to construct the small office, they would have to apply for a development permit. So, that's how we would do that, a separate permit altogether.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Deputy Warden, Trevor Cunningham.
Right. So, is the moving ahead with the project contingent on Department of Transportation approval of the driveway and the parking spaces? Or no? I mean, could the, could the business proceed without the, without the parking spaces and the approval of the additional driveway? I mean, there's obviously a driveway that accesses the property already. That's my question, I guess.
Right. So, since the driveway approval is not something on our purview, that would not be a requirement. If they had to use their existing driveway, that would be fine. Hopefully, they'll get permission for the other driveway.
Right. So, that's an upgrade, but it's not something that we would concern ourselves?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Lauren Cushing.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Roger, for that presentation. You're talking about a daycare for, lack of better word, daycare for dogs. What is the maximum number of dogs that would be there? More dogs, more noise. Is there a maximum number or minimum number?
There is no maximum or minimum number, according to myself, anyway. I'm not really sure, to be honest with you, from memory, if there was a maximum number of dogs that were proposed to be there. But the owners are here to potentially, they could possibly answer that question for you?
All right. I'll ask them that that time.
Sorry about that.
Is there any more questions from council? Stop. Counselor Allen, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go, thanks, thank you, Roger. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just gonna go a little further to Counsel Hurlbert's question about the next, the second outbuilding. So, that's obviously not in the, not in the plan that's in front of us. So, we have no idea where that one's going to be. We're gonna have a chance to ask, are we gonna have a chance? We will be able to ask some questions of the applicants? So, that would only, like, the approval of the plan for the next building would only, could only take place once they figure out where they want to put it and things. It wasn't something that would have been into the site approval, wouldn't have already been, you wouldn't have already had an idea where they're putting that building?
Yes. So, we do have an idea. We have more than an idea. Actually, the building is shown on the site plan, on the digital site plan.
Is that the red building?
Is it the little red?
Yes.
Oh, okay. 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 I see it there now. Thank you.
I'm not sure if it's red in our new plan. Is it red?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it's where the entrance and exit is, is that where you're referring to?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Okay. I was just curious as to how much closer to the adjacent property it was going to be, but it's on the other side of the home. Okay.
That's correct.
Thanks, Roger.
Any more? Counselor Cody Dirk, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Roger. Roger, we have other, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe we have other kennels in the municipality of the District of Yarmouth. And could you tell me if we have had other complaints by neighbors of those facilities?
I have had no complaints about kennels in the municipality since I've been doing this job. Whether there were complaints before my time, I'm not sure, but I started this development officer's job around 2014, I believe, and I haven't had any complaints.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Nick Hilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, so, my biggest concern is when you say that they've applied for a driveway and parking lot, but yet, if that's not approved, they could use their own. Does that mean they could move the building and the fence? When you say this is proposed site plan, how permanent are these, like...
So, the buildings and tents would have to, according to my approval, the buildings and fences would have to be built and placed as per the plan.
Roger, I do have one question. There's a report in here regarding the pink Corylopsus and the environmental issues. Has the pink Corylopsus been noted to be in that area since it's so close to a tidal area? Was that noted?
So, I don't have the answer to that question. That was provided by the Paches, that information. So, I actually have no idea if that was, that plant's been reported to be there or not. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. So, if there's seen, there's no more questions, Madam CEO, we'll move on. Thank you, Roger.
Due to our COVID-19 protocols, we always wipe down the area where people's been sitting so the next person can go. All right, moving on, we have another presentation by Cody and Caitlin Pache. You can come down, make your presentation. Your microphone's on, so as soon as you're seated and ready to go, you have the floor.
Hi. I don't really have much of a presentation, other than what's already been noted. I was more here to answer any questions, like, I see, well, regarding your question about complaints from other ones, we've done a little bit of research, and most of the other kennels in the municipality are spaced a lot further away and aren't in the type of setting we have in Pleasant Lake. Like, Pleasant Lake is pretty much like this room right here. Like, we're all around the edge of it, and for sound to travel across one side of it or another is not, is, there's space, but sound travels. We all know how much sound travels. I mean, it's, it's, it echoes, there's trees, there's trees around the lake, there's the whole thing, but, I don't know. The report we filled out there lists the pink Corylopsus flower, and in that report, there are, there have been mature plants. Last time they did a survey, there was 29 mature plants found there, and they only, they only exist basically in this part of the province, in this part of Canada, in the Tuscan River watershed. So, I guess that would be, they are confirmed to be in the lake, and I'm assuming that gives them some sort of protection level. They are listed, they are actually a registered endangered species. So, but, no, I'm really more interested in hearing some of your guys' questions, like, about what my concerns are. Because it's hard for me to put into words how much of a shakeup this is for us, as, like, a small, we've all been living there for 10 years. It's a quiet, little, tiny neighborhood. And I mean, I don't know, we've looked, looked at their Facebook page from their previous operation, and I mean, there was 20, 25 dogs. I don't want to exaggerate, but I mean, in some pictures, you can see 20, 25 dogs on an area half the size. So, that would sort of make me think that they're gonna have at least that much there, if not more. And I mean, my captain has a kennel, and he has seven, eight, nine dogs at a time. And to go out there and work on lobster gear for two months is insane, the amount of noise that comes out of his kennel. He's off the road, he's well back away from people, he don't have no problems, he has all kinds of room, he's got 60 acres to take him for walks and run him and all this other stuff. We don't have that in Pleasant Lake, and we don't have the benefit of that kind of space between houses. And I mean, if you look at the map, the one that's provided there, we live pretty close. And, I mean, the barn, our two bedrooms, our bedroom and our daughter's bedroom, is on that end of the house, and the barn is not very far away. And if the proposed driveway that they, if the driveway they propose isn't allowed, and they decide to try and use the one that exists now, that puts all that traffic, like, right there, within 50 feet, you know, of them, cars coming and going, turning around, the whole bit, like, like I say, having, my captain having a kennel, I see, like, he's only got, he's got less than 10 dogs, and it's traffic all day in and out of there, because some are getting dropped off at 7:00 in the morning, some are getting dropped off at 10:00, some are getting dropped off here, there, and everywhere, sort of thing. So, I don't know. It, we're definitely gonna, we're definitely gonna try to, try to stop it, I guess, would be, plain terms of it. I don't know.
Counselor Christian, you have a question?
Hey, Mr. Warden. Thank you, Pache, for being here today. I can understand your position that you're in, that perhaps you just want to have some questions asked. Have you, I might have missed it in the report, you said there's some rare plants that are in that area?
Yeah.
What type of plants? Do you have the names over there?
I do, actually. I don't know if this was passed out to you guys.
Is it in there?
Yeah. We, we put a report there, just one that...
Yeah, I might have missed it there, I just skimmed over it.
But, yeah, no, the long and the short of that is, it's an endangered...
So, did you go on that private property to look at that?
What's that?
Did you go on their property to look at those plants?
No, no. I've been around in the canoe and stuff, but...
So, these are along the shoreline?
Yeah. Yeah. It's, I believe, I'd have to look, but they're within, like, a tidal range, not so much a tidal range, but like, in between the high water mark and the low water mark.
I understand that, yeah. So, you say you're, the house is, how, again, I might have missed it, the distance between your house and their house near the barn, you said it's fairly close. You say 50 feet?
I would say, like, from wall to wall, 100, 100? I'm sure I figured it out just...
Now, I see they have a proposed privacy fence there, too. That would redo some of the...
Well, I, I don't know the details of the fence. I am fairly familiar with a couple of different types of fence, so I don't know what they would propose that would block sound. I mean, generally, for stuff like that, I would expect, like, a chain link fence with, like, the gray inserts that would block visually, if it's high enough, but I don't, like, I can't expect that that would do anything for sound.
Yeah.
Like, anything short of a concrete wall isn't gonna do very much for sound.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Daniel Allen.
Thanks for coming in, Cody. I'm actually, I'm, well, I'm very familiar with the area, don't live far from it. Are there other animals around? Like, are there other pets in the area? Does everybody, do you guys have pets? Does, you know what I mean, is there...
We have a couple of cats, but pretty much everyone else around the lake has dogs. And part of the concerns that they brought to us, like, they kind of, everyone around the lake signed our, our letter, except for one, we couldn't get a hold of them, but everyone around the lake signed our letter. And one of the reasons they, one of their concerns was that everyone has dogs, and those dogs create their own amount of noise, and they're concerned that dogs barking back and forth is gonna perpetually have dogs over there barking, because they're, boy, yeah. It's one thing if you got one dog that barks for five minutes, and then one that barks for five minutes, but if it's...
Right. Right. And do many of the, springtime, when the kayak, the kayakers, the, Gaspurro, I guess, because I don't want to be mistaken for the paddle boats, but the kayakers are in there, how much stir do they cause?
They are there for about a month and a half straight, all hours of the day, and on all types of vehicles to get there, whether it's homemade dirt bikes, or, you know, and if you're anyone familiar with kind of the kayak and scene, it can be kind of a raucous...
But the traffic's heavy. The traffic's heavy. But I'm talking, like, do they cause much of a stir with the dogs around the lake?
Uh, yeah. Once in a while, when you hear, like, when, when the dip net hits the tub there to make that, that's generally what you'll hear. there to make that, that's generally, you'll hear one across the lake pipe up, and then they usually start to chain reaction and.
Right on, okay, all right. Yeah, I guess, because other, other than, for me, other than the noise factor, you know, environment's really out of our purview, as far as what's going to happen, you know, I hate to say that, but it is, it's not in our, but, other than the noise, the noise would be, my, my concern would be the noise, right? My, to be honest with you, my concern would be the noise, right?
That is our biggest concern, obviously.
I've had my dog at, at a couple kennels around the area, and, again, I've never, I've never had any of them say that they've had complaints, but, I don't know, I mean, there's one that's only up the road, that might be the one you're talking about, 10, 10 kilometers up towards Somerville?
Yeah, that'd be my captain.
That'd be your captain?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, if you're familiar with where he is, he's fairly.
He's off the road, on, he's on a lake, but he's up off the road ways, yeah, yeah, all right, all right, no, thanks, Cody, thanks for coming in.
Any more questions, the council staff? Thank you very much, Cody, for coming in.
Thank you.
And as always, during COVID-19 protocols, we're going to have Roger wipe down the area where Cody was sitting for the next presenter. Thank you very much, Roger. Next one on the list, 4.3, owners Jonathan and Kelsey Lyons. The microphone's already on, so you don't have to do anything, and as soon as you're settled and ready, you can speak.
Hi.
Hi.
You can go right ahead, anytime.
Okay, I'm Jonathan Lyons.
And I'm Kelsey Lyons.
So, we literally just moved into the area, like, a month and a half ago, and it was our intention when we moved in to, I mean, what we wanted to do was open a dog boarding facility. We did do a lot of research before we moved there, and, you know, our intention is not to cause uproar to our new neighbors who we haven't even met yet, because we, the facility, type of facility we run is not about, people have this preconception of kennels being barking dogs all the time, and that's not how it is. As Cody did say, he looked on our Facebook page, we have had 25, 30 dogs in a pen at one time, and there's a lot of pictures, if you look through our 27,000 pictures on our Facebook page, you'll see that, and a lot of them, the dogs are all lying down and are quiet, in a lot of cases. More dogs actually is brings a quieter environment. Sometimes, when you only have one or two dogs, they get bored, and they bark. That can happen more often when there's less dogs than more dogs, even though that may sound strange. We want to run a very calm facility, which is what we want, which is why our intended name is Water's Edge Dog Retreat. It's, it's about keeping the dogs calm. Dogs get bored when they're, when they're, when they have nothing to do, so, I mean, we, the type of facility we run is making sure that they're happy, and that they're, they play, and that they have rules. We are very strict, we have a lot of policies which we brought in, in the previous facility we ran for over seven years, and we actually set a precedent for most other kennels in the area that actually started following what we were doing, because we believe that dogs, we don't believe in consistent barking, we don't allow it, we never have. If we do have dogs that are consistently barking, we will actually dismiss them if we can't settle them down ourselves.
If they're not content, your dog's not content, and the thing with kennels is, like Jonathan said, a lot of people think when they go to a kennel, it's dogs barking all day, throw them in, let them do what they're doing, but the thing is, is we're true believers that their care and happiness come first. What a lot of people don't know with the dog history is, barking dogs all day leads to overstimulation, and overstimulation can lead to dog fights, and that's how it works when you have dogs as packs, and like, or, sorry, dogs work as packs, and like Jonathan said, you know, we never just have one dog in the playpen, we're what you call a dog-friendly facility, so they all go together depending on their size and temperament, and the more stimulated items they have in the playpen, whether it be themselves, whether, like Jonathan said, sometimes the busier it is, the quieter it is. Like, at our old facility, we used to have about 30 dogs out there, and when people pulled in, they'd look at us and say, oh, it was a quiet day today, and it's like, no, there's 30 dogs out there lying down, but the thing is, is when they burn that energy in the morning, they're content through to the rest of the day. And in the playpens, we have things to stimulate them as well, it's not just themselves, it's, we have balls, we have dogloos, we have, what else, like, jolly balls, we have it all, so, I mean, they stay very occupied.
I mean, if you want to ask us questions, it might be an easier way to answer instead of us rambling, I mean, it's.
All right, I'll open up the floor. Any counselors have any questions? Counselor Lauren Cushing, you have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you both. From what I understand, you guys have experience in this.
Yeah, we are certified dog, dog care specialists and dog care providers.
You're certified dog specialists.
I've been involved with them since I've been eight years old, and I managed the facility and dealt with up to 60 at a time, and the HR emptied dogs.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying, if you keep the dog busy, they're not going to be barking for attention. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if we do have dogs that do show that they're bored and are barking, we will actually bring them inside and give them time out, basically, is what we call it. We don't allow it, we never have, we are very respectful of our neighbors, it's something we've always been wary of.
So, okay, so if you have a, a dog that is not friendly to the other dogs, and you, what would you, bring him inside and put him in a kennel?
We dismiss them, so if they, they have to be dog friendly, what we do is, we do the initial daycare for a new dog, and what that is, is, well, first off, they fill out a registration form that Jonathan designed on our website, and it kind of covers everything. Is your dog dog friendly? Does it have separation anxiety? If so, what's the case? Because that could cause the barking, and so they fill that out, and what they do is they bring it in for an initial daycare, we try it off with the other dogs, see how it is. If it's doing great, then we leave them out to play, if they're showing any signs of aggression, we'll take them out of the pen instantly, and we will let the owners know, because we are what you call a dog-friendly facility, so all dogs have to get along with each other. They don't have to play with each other, but they have to get along with each other.
We've never accepted aggressive dogs of any type, and we don't allow it, no.
Okay, so if a dog gets into the play area, the owner said, oh, I have a very friendly dog, and come to find out, he may be friendly with their owner, but not friendly with other people, how do you, how would you take control of that dog? Is he going to be, he or she's going to be angry, he's going to be upset, and how do you?
You'll know immediately if the dog doesn't like you. If the, you'll know straight.
Then what do you do? What do you do then?
We will take it out of the pen, put it in.
How do you get him out of the pen?
You leash him and take it out.
We don't agree with holding a dog on leash, because, again, that's a leash aggression, and you can't do that in a group of dogs, but what we have done in the past, if we have a dog that's great with us, but, say you have a two-year-old dog, and it's never boarded before, but it's really people-friendly, we'll take it with us, and if it goes across and sees the other dogs and is scared, petrified, we won't even dare put it in the pen straight away. What we'll do is, we'll take it and put it in with one or two dogs and see how it does, and if it does good with those dogs, then we slowly work their way out, kind of like at a kid's daycare. You wouldn't just throw your son in for the first time and expect him to be fine if he was nervous, you'd work it up slow.
I don't want to compare them with a, with a child, but, again, if the dog's aggressive, how, like, you say you're going to leash him, but how are you going to get the leash on and get him?
In the nearly eight years we were with Alvin Dog Ranch, which was our previous facility, we've never had that situation. Once, once ever, did a dog show aggression towards me, when we, we put it into a separate pen, because we were a little unsure of it, and the owners were a little sketchy, and we just, we leashed it, we had, we used slip leashes, and we just put it on its neck, we take it to our doggy barn, and we put it into a room, and we called the owner.
And let the owners come back and get them.
Right. There was some mention in the report about, I know it's not our jurisdiction, about the partner environment and, and waste going into the Anis River or Pleasant Lake, have you dealt with the partner environment at all?
I mean, I don't, I don't know why there'd be concern, but, I mean, no waste would be anywhere near the lake.
Have you approached the partner environment, asked us questions or anything?
No, we didn't, I didn't think there would be a need, I mean, one, previously, we bag all waste, everything is bagged, it goes to landfill, like it should, I mean, there's no reason why there'd be anything going towards the lake.
Okay, good, thank you.
Counselor Sherry Hurlibur, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for coming in. When I was looking through, I'm reading the report, and it says a doggy barn will consist of 12 to 15 rooms, so would that be for overnight dogs, or is, can you explain?
That's for both, so what we will do is, we'll kind of keep the same thing as Alvin Dog Ranch, we have doggy rooms and we have crates, so dogs that are used to dog, or crates, will go in crates, and dogs that aren't familiar with crates will go into their room. We have them built that if you have two dogs from one family, they can be together, or three, like, we have different sized rooms depending on how many dogs you'll have, but those rooms will be used for overnight boarding, all dogs have their own space unless they're from the same family, or they'll be used for daycare if it's cold, rainy, thunder, switching up and rotating the dogs inside and out, we'll also use those rooms for that.
Okay, so, you heard us ask earlier, we don't have any regulations that say how many dogs you can or can't have. Do you have an approximation, like, for the daycare day drop-off, how many would you, how many are you envisioning, and then for your overnight? Do you have any idea on that yet?
We would normally have a maximum between day and night, we balance it out of about 40 dogs, and even saying that, it's very rarely you'd actually get up to that unless you're in midsummer when tourist season is on, but that's balancing out how many daycares and how many boarding are in. We've never overbooked, it's one thing we're very mindful of, and always have been, a lot of kennels will shove as many dogs in as possible to get as much money in. We've never done that, we've always ran it with a, with a minimum number, so that the dogs are comfortable. We, once ever, we went to about 45 dogs, and we didn't like the feeling, and we stopped it straight away.
Okay.
We cut it back.
And I read somewhere here about fencing, a combination of wood and chain links, so I know that there are specific things in this plan that you have to abide by, but do you know where the wood fencing would be in comparison to the property that does?
Yeah, well, I know one, Cody was saying that, the fence along their property would be, would be a wooden privacy fence.
Okay.
Six foot high, because of the hanging over that we have to go for.
So, that one would be wood?
Yes.
Okay, and?
The other one would be around where, if we do get approval for the driveway, it would be where the driveway is, just so the dogs don't get overstimulated when they hear the cars, and we also don't like them seeing their owners until we leash them and bring them out, just because, again, they can't get overstimulated.
Right, I understand, my dog has stayed at a daycare before, and when, when the owners of the daycare tell you the rules, you follow them.
Oh, yes. You have to, because a lot of people think all dogs are.
It's like they've never seen you before, right? It's like, oh, this is the first time I see my owner, right? And the other question was about no, noise and sound, and it said no, nothing on Sunday, so would that mean you would have no boarding overnight dogs on Sunday, or would that mean?
If there were dogs staying on Saturday, there would be, like, a minimum two-night stay on the weekend, like, if they came in on Saturday, they would have to stay until Monday.
There would be dogs, but there wouldn't be any daycares or pickup or drop-offs on that day, so the only day we'd, the, Sunday would be only looking after the dogs that are there. Yeah.
Okay, because it says closed Sunday, so that would lead me to believe there would be no dogs there on Sunday.
No, because somebody.
There'd be no daycare, but we would, any boarding dogs that are there would, would be there, of course.
We couldn't, yeah, we couldn't guarantee they wouldn't be there on a Sunday if they were gone away for a week or two weeks, because we'd be offering long-term boarding as well.
Okay, I think that's it for now, thank you.
Any more questions? Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thanks for coming in, guys, welcome to, welcome to the neighborhood. Forty dogs, that's a lot of dogs. I take it, so at night, they're all inside, none are out? So, I don't know if, I mean, you've only been here for a month and a half, so I'm not sure how familiar you are with the activity I was asking Cody about on that river, right next to you.
I've, well, only what I've heard, so.
So, it's quite active for, well, April, May, June, into June. Any concerns, like, what, what happens if that gets those dogs riled up in that burn? Like, what?
You weed out the ones that are causing trouble, and you bring them inside.
Inside?
There's always, there's always one or two dogs that will cause aggro.
I, I think, I, like, because there's a lot of activity, like, and, and it's, it's not a day activity. It's a, I mean, sometimes it is, but a lot of times, it's, it's a all-night, I don't know how happy you guys would be with it.
Can we, can we appeal that?
It's an all-night, it's an all-night thing, now, that'd be my only concern, I, I keep going back, it's the noise, it's the noise that bothers me.
First, the doggy barn will be fully insulated, okay? We're, we're, again, just going back to our previous facility, that's what I have to go back to, we've had 40 dogs asleep by 6:00 in the evening, with no issues, with lots of traffic around, with lots of neighbors around, and.
Fireworks, thunder.
We, we fully monitor with cameras, smoke alarms, fire alarms, everything, so we'll always know if there's any issues with the dogs going on.
And you're, you're, the house itself is your permanent residence?
Yes.
You're going to be, you're going to be living in it?
And again, we have a, we have a three-year-old, and we have a six-month-old, so we don't want barking dogs, and I'm noise sensitive, believe it or not, so I don't want barking dogs, but we want the dogs to be calm, that, that is our, our goal, it's to make sure that the dogs are happy and that they're calm, it's, it's not all about the money, and I've said this a thousand times to different people, it's about the care of the dogs, because that is what we do, and it's about, you know, giving dogs fun during the day, but having rules. We have rules, we're very strict, we always have been, we've abided by our own rules, and we have a lot of policies, and we go on to, again, our previous website.
We'll be following a lot of it.
And look through our policies, which we created, you'll see how strict we are about it, because, again, I mean, dogs can play, but there have to be rules in place, and I know you don't completely relate to kids, but they are very like kids, and, you know, you, you have the shy dogs, and you have the noisy dogs, you have the ones that want to cause trouble, or you have the ones that, you know, just sit in a corner somewhere, and, you know, that's what we do, we, we learn body language, we know what dogs are like, and we deal with them appropriately, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any more questions? Staff? Thank you very much, counsel is heard, and ask you some questions, and we'll move on to the next agenda, part of the agenda.
All right.
Thank you. All right, the next part of the agenda is call for written submissions, if you see Appendix D and E, there's written submissions there, and Madam CEO, and/or staff, is there any more written submissions other than what we have? That's all in your package, is there any counselor comments? Seeing none, I call for adjournment of this meeting. Moved by Counselor Sherry Hurlibur, seconded by Counselor Patty Durkey. Call for adjournment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried unanimously, thank you very much.